Trustee Clark?
Here.
Trustee Ertler?
Here.
Trustee Gezman?
Here.
Trustee Kavitsky?
Here.
Supervisor Tusher?
Here.
Let the Librarian know Clerk Law is also in attendance.
Do I hear a motion to approve the minutes of January 14, 2014?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
A second.
Any questions, concerns? Hearing none. Roll call.
Trustee Ertler?
Yes.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Gezman?
Yes.
Trustee Kavitsky?
Yes.
Supervisor Tusher?
Yes. Do I hear a motion for approval of minutes of February 6, 2014, special budget meeting?
It says they're not here.
They're not in there.
They are not in there.
Oh.
It's about to do it next month.
It'll have to be in there next time. I didn't have a chance to get them to them to copy it for you guys. I do have them, though.
Okay.
Scratch it. Okay. Communications.
We received a letter from the Riverside Little League thanking us for sponsoring them for the sponsorship. Mary Robb also has a communication from our event on Sunday. And Mary, just as a side note, I'd like to thank you. It was a wonderful presentation that we had on Sunday.
Oh, it was.
Thank you.
I was very pleased with the way it turned out. So this is from Marguerite Mishkin, and it says, "Isaac Judy Leoni Howard, Lily and I want to thank you for the wonderful experience we had last Sunday, February 9. From beginning to end, you treated us as royalty. Even before the event, you made sure the community knew about us coming by and having a thoughtful article in the newspaper. In fact, some people told me that they came because they had seen the article in the paper. Then at the community hall, everyone was so friendly and helpful. Once the program began, the audience listened with awe and respect. They asked intelligent questions and listened attentively when answered. Everyone was so warm. Many of them thanked us for coming. All of us want you to know that the experience in Riverside will stand out to us as one of the best events in promoting this important book. We felt surrounded by love and warmth the whole day."
All right.
So that was from Marguerite.
Any other communications?
No, none.
Visitors' remarks.
I'm Frances Joyce, and I'm a township assessor, and I just wanted to report that our township is currently open for appeals through March 10, and this means that the assessor's office is accepting appeals from all the villages in our township who are part of our township. And our office, as usual, is available to help residents find their carports and file their appeals in a way that's best for them. We are extending our office hours until 2:00, so we're in the office from 9 until 2:00. So residents are able to call or come in any time of the year period. We are also, we also wanted to let our residents know that it's not too late to file for exemptions for 2013, and we are currently still taking exemptions for the homeowner exemption, senior exemption, senior freeze, and disabled homeowner exemption.
You not only cover our township, but other township assessor's offices which have closed, you're more like a little saddler in your office, right?
Well, sometimes, we do help a lot of residents in our community who have parents in the surrounding communities. They come with their parents' exemptions, and these are our residents, so we don't want to turn them away. And if someone does come in who just happens to be a provisor, because, you know, the lines are so finely drawn, and we just don't, especially in this weather, I don't want to see people walking or going to provisor or Lyons Township. But I know, especially with Lyons Township, far more than mutual understanding, yet we do help each other's constituents, that they have a link in her office or her land in my office.
You did file the senior exemptions, too, right?
Yes, the senior exemptions went, the renewal exemptions were mailed in the middle of January, I think, and, or beginning of January, and there's, there was a soft deadline of February 5, but it's been extended to the end of the month, so.
How old do you have to be for a senior exemption?
For the 2013 tax year, you had to turn 65 in 2013. Because in Cook County, we're paying arrears, so we're, we'll be paying the 2013 tax bill this year, so this is when we work on those exemptions this year.
Thank you, Frances.
Thank you.
Supervisor's report. First off, Kat took the steam out of it for me. I want to thank the board for being so perceptive. I want to thank Wayne Gezman, Anne Kavitsky, John Ertler, Mary, especially Mary Robb, Clark, and Leanne Law. Mary Robb put together this program last Sunday, "Children of the Holocaust." It was excellent. We had a full house. We even had to add more chairs, and the...
How many were there?
There had to be over 100.
Were there?
Yeah.
I know, it was a big group.
Yeah.
Sorry.
The, yeah, you get mind cramps, you get interrupted, you know? The age range was from young adults to seniors, and I think we all know it's very important that Holocaust survivors always pass this on, and none of the younger people forget, no matter what comes out in the news of, you know, all, you know, it's, you know, fictitious or whatever. These are people that lived and lived through it, and thank you, Mary Robb, and thank you, board.
I think there might have been more people if there wasn't so much snow out there, and parking was such a problem.
Well, see, our big thing here is parking. Trustees' reports.
I have a follow-up. A couple months ago, when we were talking about suggestions for programs, I suggested maybe we do something in the way of recycling. My initial thought was hazardous waste disposal, and what I've been learning is that it's not easy, and it's extremely expensive to do. I talked to some people about events that have been held in the area, and I talked to a fellow from West Cook County Solid Waste Agency. He said about five years ago, they did one at Triton. Now, this is assuming it's being paid for by us, okay? And, no, he said that that one was done by the Illinois Environmental Protection Agency, and it cost over $120,000.
Over how much?
120. I talked to a fellow from Allied Waste, and he said he would estimate an average to be somewhere between 20 and $50,000 to do an event like that, but he couldn't say for sure. I talked to a person from Heritage Environmental, which is a recycling company that the state and Cook County use, and the fellow told me that they had a paint-only, paint-only, like latex oil and lead-based paints, that they did in DuPage, and it cost roughly $30,000 for just paint, for just paint. I did talk to a gentleman at the Illinois Environmental Protection Agency, and he said that they do events, and there's an application form, which I printed off the Internet. You can apply, but this year, they have 75 requests pending, and they are planning to do, I think he said 11, nine, they're going to do nine in 2014. So you can apply, and then, they do expect the entity that wants to sponsor it to contribute something, but essentially, they're picking up most of the cost, if they do it. And he said, whether, you know, you wouldn't necessarily be number 76 if your application came in next, but it depended on how long ago an event was maybe held in your area. There has never, according to their records, been an event in either Riverside or North Riverside. They did one in Brookfield in 2005. That was the latest one in this area. So, I mean, we could, we could look at filling out the application and just putting it on file.
Yeah.
It asks for a lot. In fact, I'm not sure, we talked about the commons for a location, I don't think the commons would be big enough for what they would do, for the equipment that they would bring in, and the number of people they're talking about. So I was thinking maybe, you know, the school, RB, or something.
The event that they did in Brookfield, I believe, was held at RB.
Yeah. That wouldn't, that would seem to make sense. That might be big enough. But there's, they request upfront information on, you know, what kind of volunteers you would have to help, what the space would be available, who owns the site, you have to get a letter of permission from the owner of the site, send them a photograph, a sketch and map of the area, local personnel that would be available to assist.
Don't think the IRS.
Yeah. It's quite a lengthy, I mean, it's not complicated, complicated, but they want to, they're like covering all the bases.
What is the purpose of all this? What do they do when they come in here?
Well, if for this particular, it'd be taking household hazardous waste, things that you cannot throw in your garbage, you know, chemicals, pesticides.
That people throw in their garbage.
Well, we're trying to encourage people by having recycling events to dispose of things properly. So, at any rate, I mean, we can look at this, I thought about paper, but Riverside Bank does a paper recycling in May.
Yeah, once a year.
And we were talking about May possibly doing this, so I think that would be duplicative, unless we did it later in the year. And Mary Robb told us about her family's company doing bicycley, bicycle recycling. And I did talk to the person at that company, was very, very nice. That would cost us practically nothing. They would come to, commons would work on that, in that case. They take bikes, bike parts, crutches, and sewing machines, and wheelchairs.
At working bikes?
At working bikes.
I already know about the crutches and the sewing machine.
Yeah, yeah. So they're willing, I mentioned May, they said they could probably work something out in May. They would come out, they would pick up what we collected and just take it. They recycle these materials. They fix things that are broken and might send them off, they send a lot of things to foreign countries. She's supposed to be sending me some material in the mail, which I haven't received yet, but, and they would have, you know, information available there. So if we wanted to just do that...
Just do the bikes.
Just do the bikes.
I talked to Grouse Disposal. They have recycling, I talked mainly about shredding, which would cost us next to nothing to shred, you know, maybe 1,200, $1,500. They would have somebody here, people can come here and watch them shred.
Like they do at the bank.
At the bank?
Yeah.
Oh, I thought that was just, I didn't know that they shredded.
They shred it.
Oh, yeah, you can watch them shred it.
Oh, I didn't know that they shredded.
Yeah, no, no, that's what they do.
Okay.
That's what they do. And if, I mean, we could do that, maybe do it in the fall, instead of doing it in May, because if the banks, and the bank is going to do it, they just don't have the date set yet.
Okay.
All right. Why don't you get the information in our boxes or something, so we can see it rather than just hearing this, what you're talking about?
Working bikes is free. They come out.
It wouldn't cost us anything.
Wouldn't cost us anything, maybe a banner or something, and some ads in the paper, but...
Yeah, but essentially, yeah.
You know, and we can collect, you know, bikes beforehand, but what we did was just people came and dropped off the bikes. We had people, they would swing in, it was a roundabout thing, so they'd swing in, we'd go to the, their car, help them unload the bike, and then the people from working bikes were there, and they loaded up.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Do I hear anything else?
Also, when we did working bikes, my company, we're in Roseau, the police had bikes that, they donated, I think, 24 bikes that they had.
Oh, found or...
Found.
Or stolen or something like that, and they couldn't find the owners? Yeah. Well, what do you want me to do? Should I, I mean, do you want to consider...
Look into the bicycle one, yeah.
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 Consider just that one, and then pick a date in May?
Yeah, or, you know...
All right, the shredding...
Two hours.
Something a little bit warmer than May, okay?
You're being two hours, 10 to 12, that's what we did it. I think, no, it was 9 to 12.
Yeah, that sounds...
We may still have snow in May.
You have to write this, and that's snow, or maybe icicles at this rate.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other trustees' reports? And we have mental health board reports, any questions on that for Ann from mental health board, she's liaison. Hearing none. Old business. Do I hear a motion, a motion, a motion to approve the tentative township budget for 2014?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any questions or concerns? Hearing none. Roll call.
Trustee Gezman?
Yes.
Trustee Kavitsky?
Yes.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Ertler?
Yes.
Supervisor Tusher?
Yes.
Motion carried.
So this is just the tentative?
Right.
Right, and we will print that in the paper saying people can inspect it.
But we don't have the mental health board yet, correct?
No.
Okay.
Should have it next week.
Under township audit, proposals from Sheldon Fox and Klein Hall &amp; Associates. They're both in the packets. Do I hear a motion to accept either one, and could then questions and concerns about one or the other?
I'll make a motion, but before we do that, I noticed that the difference is about $620, Sheldon Fox is $620 more than Klein Hall, but I was more, I was more pleased with Sheldon Fox when we had them than with Klein Hall. So I'll make a motion that we go with Sheldon Fox for the audit for the year ending March 31, 2014, for all their auditing services.
Do I hear a second?
I second that.
Any other questions or concerns?
Well, I was wondering, do you think we could try to negotiate with them?
I can ask, see if, you know...
You know?
But, you know, this is what, you know, they sent out, the whole package.
No, I understand.
You know, I can, it's no harm in asking, you know, I'll tell them what the other guy said, and can you come down to it?
Well, if we approve it, you gotta tell them, "We approved this now." Maybe you can give us a little, you know...
What, Jack?
I said, "If we approved this," you can tell them that we approved them, and maybe they can give us a little something off on the audit.
Okay.
Can't hurt to ask.
No.
Trustee Gezman?
Yes.
Trustee Ertler?
Yes.
Trustee Kavitsky?
Yes.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Supervisor Tusher? Motion carried.
Stackable chairs under old business. I talked to Penny over in North Riverside, she said, "Somebody went over there and took a look at the chairs?"
I did. They're very nice, but they're very expensive.
Color-wise, you know, we're, yeah.
I mean, that wasn't so bad, but...
But, I mean, compared to the ones we got up there, you know, we're getting, yeah.
But they're, they were like $35 a chair.
Yeah, $37.45.
There's no volume discount or anything?
Pardon me?
There's no volume discount?
That is the volume discount.
Yeah.
$35 a chair.
No, $37.45 a chair.
Oh, okay.
They went in with Marder Christie, and I think they bought like, maybe 500 altogether. They got 200, and they still paid $37.45 per chair.
Well, that was my question, thank you.
I mean, they're, they're ni, nice chairs and lightweight, but unless I'm going to buy 150 of them, which we don't really need, I don't think.
What is, on the, the display, where it shows the chair that you circled, Hercules series...
Now, wait a minute. Okay, you're talking about the bizchair.com?
Looks like it, yeah.
Yeah.
How do you get the $17 price that it says there? Your price, $16.95.
This is what they're, this price is 59. That's because we're getting like 50 or more.
Well, how many are we going to buy?
50.
Well, then why do we pay 37 bucks?
No, 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 that's a different chair.
It's a different chair.
It's a different chair.
Different chair.
That's what I'm asking, what's the difference between the $17 one and the $37 one?
They're lighter. Aren't they lighter?
They're 37 are lighter.
Much.
They're plastic.
They stack very easily.
Yeah.
These are more difficult to stack. What did the custodians say?
They're like the ones we have now in the auditorium, which are getting better, pretty good.
What, the folding ones you're talking about?
No, 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 the stacking, the stackable ones.
The stackable.
The ones that were out on Sunday.
Yeah.
Oh, oh, okay, okay.
What did the custodians say?
They liked the stackable ones.
They said those were okay, not, not too heavy?
Right. Especially since they got...
Okay, okay, I guess my next question is, how many chairs does it take to make 20 pounds? Don't answer that, Rich.
So the ones that are up there now are brown, they're covered in brown.
Right. These come in, we can get, you look at $1,895 a chair, which comes in, stackable brown, and it's top line of biz chair, it's the fourth at the end.
I would go with a, with a brown or something in that, in the earth tone or something for the auditorium.
Well, kind of, the dark browns match the other ones, you know, we're going to get 50 of them.
Okay.
I don't, I don't see the $20 difference at all.
Between what?
Between the $17 one that I'm showing, that I'm looking at.
It's $19, basically, because...
All right, 19. But that's a big difference.
I guess it's materials that are used, and how the chair is made, you know?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm not the manufacturer, Wayne.
But I'm the buyer.
Well, then don't pick the expensive one.
You're right.
I don't, I wouldn't.
Well, okay, you know, I'm just saying, you're asking questions, I, none of us can really answer what their pricing is like.
Okay.
Do I hear a motion?
I'll make the motion that we purchase 50 chairs, and what was the price again for the 50?
Was it $1,895?
1,890, isn't it?
Oh, that's good.
1,895.
I thought you were getting the $37.
No, no, no.
No, no.
Oh.
The stackable ones we're going to get.
Right, the stackable for $18.90. That's the Hercules series upholstered stacked chair. This is black on what I'm looking at.
The other highlighted is brown.
Oh, brown, okay, and brown.
Yeah.
Okay.
Brown slash copper vein.
Right, okay.
Which is 1,890.
That's the, that's the one.
You want, do I hear a second for 59?
I second.
Wayne, second.
Any questions, concerns? Hearing none. Roll call.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Kavitsky?
Yes.
Trustee Gezman?
Yes.
Trustee Ertler?
Yes.
Supervisor Tusher?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Proposal for lighting, Amber, no, it's quite a while back, since 200 times, I gotta come out and change any, you know, main fixtures. The fixture out there is very old, they don't have parts for it. You know, he, Aaron, is suggesting what would best fit, and here's this, you know, you have the proposal in front of you. Do I hear a motion to accept Aaron's proposal?
For how much? 59? No.
Well, he's four options here.
So you want the option B. He's recommending option B.
Right. Option B is what, 25, 35, 36? Am I looking at that correctly? It's option B. Okay, I'll make a motion, we go with option B, with AM Electrical Engineering and Design Services to replace the lighting.
What's the cost?
Outfront, $2,535.36. Option B.
Do I hear a second?
I second.
Any questions, concerns? Hearing none. Roll call.
Trustee Kavitsky?
Yes.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Ertler?
Yes.
Trustee Gezman?
Yes.
Supervisor Tusher?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Under new business, township health insurance on issues regarding fees and retired employees. Ann had a question about, there's whatnot, it's about $300 a year or more that we're paying retiree because of, we believe Obamacare, we call Blue Shield, they didn't know what, whether or not we pay for it or the retiree pays for it. I called Richard, he didn't know, but he would look into it at 225, 250 an hour. So you're talking, you know, $300 a year compared to, it's going to take them longer than an hour and a half.
Well, the problem with that is Obama keeps changing the law every day. He just changed it again.
Yeah, I mean, you know, so nobody really knows.
Nobody knows what's going on with that, and he's going around the Constitution, and nobody knows what the fallout is going to be with this.
It just seemed to me that we shouldn't have to pay those penalties and fees for a former employee.
But nobody knows, the Blue Cross doesn't know.
They should be able to have passed them on.
The attorney doesn't know, you know?
I know.
So what are you going to do?
Call Kathleen Sebelius. She'll know. No, I understand what they're saying, because nobody does know what the fallout is, it's going to be, yet.
So do we just keep it at, we'll pay the $300 a year until we really, we can look into it later on?
Yeah, what else can you do?
Until they know, well, until we know something.
Financially, it's more responsible to do it that way.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Yeah, to do it that way, until we know the, for the facts.
Yeah.
Anyway.
Loopfer Landscaping contract renewal. Last year was 751. This year is, I think, the same.
They reduced it by a buck.
They reduced it by a buck?
Yeah.
Oh, let's go with that.
And they did a pretty good job last year.
Then I make a motion that we renew the contract with Loopfer Landscaping, renew the contract for $750.
Do I hear a second?
I second.
Questions, concerns? Hearing none. Roll call.
Trustee Kavitsky?
Yes.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Ertler?
Yes.
Trustee Gezman?
Yes.
Supervisor Tusher?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Can I make one comment about, before we move on? They sent this...
About what, Wayne?
This particular item. They attached a certificate of liability insurance. I would like to see them add the township as an additional insured on here. It shouldn't cost them any money to do that, and it would protect us if something ever happened, hopefully not, but it doesn't hurt to do it.
Okay.
Just call them up.
That should be.
Okay.
Next one is Anderson Elevator, by law, we have to, you have a door restrictor in, it's gonna cost twenty-one hundred dollars.
What is a door restrictor?
Yeah, that's my question.
It was explained to me, but it was Greek. Basically, so the door doesn't open or close, it's gotta be safe, it's a newer.
You mean it doesn't open or close on somebody, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, so if you touch it or something, it's gonna open.
Right.
I'm sure they've improved them, too.
Yeah. 'Cause this is put in in the seventies.
Oh. Then it's time.
Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Questions, concerns, other than what they asked? Hearing non-roll call.
Trustee Giesman?
Yes.
Trustee Kavitsky?
Yes.
Trustee Ertler?
Yes.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Supervisor Tusher?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Um, number D, toy annual topics day, if there's a registration, please fill it out. Does the board approve the expense of a special rate of one fifteen plus twelve percent tax for a room? From April twenty-ninth, April thirtieth, whoever wants to sign up and go.
And also, we, the seventy-five dollar per person registration fee for whoever signs up.
Anybody thinking of going?
Pardon me, Anne?
Anybody thinking of going?
I'm not.
I'll be on vacation. Otherwise, I would go.
John, no, Leanne?
Are you going in?
I'm on vacation then. You wanna go, I think.
Normally, I would do something like this, but.
Well, no, just sign up and drop off. I'm just saying, I'm asking the board for a motion to accept it or not.
I did, I, I moved to accept it, I don't know who seconded it.
I'll second it.
Any other questions, concerns? Hearing non-roll call.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Giesman?
Yes.
Trustee Kavitsky?
Yes.
Trustee Ertler?
Yes.
Supervisor Tusher?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Um, Lions Club Chicken Dinner's coming up. Here is the, the old placemat advertisement. It's gonna be a new one, and the new one would be, it's the updated one right behind there.
What's the, the price on it, there's no price on here.
It's a hundred and twenty-five dollars.
Okay. I'll make a motion, we place the ad, the Lions Club Chicken Dinner ad, mat ad for a hundred and twenty-five dollars, the updated ad.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Questions, concerns? Hearing non-roll call.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Ertler?
Yes.
Trustee Giesman?
Yes.
Trustee Kavitsky?
Yes.
Supervisor Tusher?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Um, Saint Mary's School, Saint Patrick's Day fundraiser. They're asking for sponsorship. Just to give you a little bit of background, that last time we sponsored a religious group that, you know, we really didn't even know they were religious, I got calls in the office about, hey, you know, separate, separation between church and state.
I was just thinking of that, and that's really a shame.
Yes.
Can I make a comment?
Sure.
It's not against the law for us to support something like this, the separation of church and state, it means we can't force a religion on people.
But, you know, there's persons who had big concerns that we're even giving money for a group that's.
But we're not forcing, we're not forcing.
It's like Mary Robb says, we're not forcing them. And you're giving them a grant for the school to do this, I mean, it doesn't matter whether you're Catholic or not, or Protestant, or Lutheran, or Jewish.
It still has to do with the Catholic school.
The last one was Young Life.
Yes.
Correct, that was a religious thing that RB, that's at RB.
Yeah.
Did you get a lot of calls on that, or just?
Got several.
You did get several.
Yeah.
We did, used to donate to the Partners in Education for all the local schools, and that didn't seem to be a problem.
Is it great, great?
But that was to be used for educational programs, yes. We did it at Saint Mary's, we did it at all of them, but this is a little bit different, I mean, fundraiser.
What's the board's decision, do you, do I hear a motion to sponsor?
I would really like to, yes, but, I mean, do you feel that there's gonna be some repercussions?
Do I hear a second?
I'll second it.
Any questions or concerns?
Wait, for how much are we gonna?
Either two fifty or five hundred.
I would go with the two fifty, I would support two fifty.
I would.
Or there's actually a hundred dollar.
Go ahead.
Program ad, or a hundred dollar banner ad.
I would at least, I would at least go with, I would at least go with the two fifty.
What?
I would at least go with the, with the.
Two fifty, let's go with that.
With the, with the two fifty.
Okay, so you're, you're.
Yes, I'm making the motion for two, I started the motion, and I agree with Mary Robb.
And you second for?
And, and he's seconding, yes.
Any other questions or concerns? Hearing non-roll call.
Trustee Kavitsky?
Okay.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Ertler?
Yes.
Trustee Giesman?
Yes.
Supervisor Tusher?
Yes.
Motion carried.
For two fifty.
Would you, Rich, would you please let us know if you get any calls or something on this? I would, I would like to know.
I'll just give them your phone number, too.
No, that's okay, no, no, I would, I would really like, like to know if somebody, who's got something against this?
I mentioned that a while back, because somebody who read the newsletter called, several people complained.
At least we know the newsletter's getting read.
Yeah, true, it's doing something.
We, we may be getting letters from all the churches in the township.
Yes, yeah, yeah.
You can't refuse them.
Yeah.
Well, they have to put in the request, and then we'll determine, determine at that time.
Wait a minute, and what?
I said, they would have to put in the grant request, and we will determine it at that time.
All it takes is a letter.
I understand.
Or if we wanna buy an ad, like the Chicken Day Dinner ad, or this ad, you know.
I didn't think of that, but that could happen very easily. How many churches are in this township?
Five.
I bet there's fifty.
Oh, in the township.
No, 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 oh.
Oh, the township.
Uh, the village, well, Riverside, there's five or six.
Oh, there's more than five in Riverside?
Well, there's the Presbyterian.
Anyway, that's all right.
Methodist, Episcopal, Saint Mary's, and two Lutheran.
It's true, what's happening now.
We already got it. Sorry, I didn't, I should've brought that.
If, if this goes through, then I don't think we will have a problem if we decide to grant any further requests.
Okay.
Okay.
Grant request for Village Riverside Police Department for forty-six hundred and thirty-two dollars for GMR radar recorders, evaluating on numbers and traveling speeds and the radar, the GMR radar recorder.
They apparently think those are helpful.
Yes, and I think we need them.
Do you think they, people slow down when they see that?
Yeah.
They would slow down, I remember.
I come over on Fairbanks, the bridge, Fairbanks, and they got that one that.
Oh, that's.
And I always, I always see people slowing down.
If they see anything like that, I remember they used to leave the, the empty state police cars under the viaducts on the tollways. You see those often, it's slow right down, there's nobody in there.
Yeah.
They may still do it.
You know, a mannequin.
Right, yeah, right. I'll make a motion that we grant the, or buy, we have to buy it, correct?
Right.
The GMR radar recorder for the Riverside Police Department for forty-six hundred and thirty-two dollars.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any questions, concerns? Hearing non-roll call.
Trustee Giesman?
No.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Ertler?
Yes.
Trustee Kavitsky?
Yes.
Supervisor Tusher?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Um, next grant request is for El Houser, for the drug program, we've always given.
Yes.
You know, and it's a terrific.
Wasn't it used to be Dare, when, what's his name, Butch something?
Butch Berrwanger?
Yeah, Butch Berrwanger, I remember.
Well, that's, that's a nationwide dare program.
I'll, I'll make a motion that we grant the Riverside, or the Houser Junior High Advance, Pro Cougar Advance Program, fifteen hundred dollars.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any questions, concerns? Hearing non-roll call.
Trustee Kavitsky?
Yes.
Trustee Giesman?
Yes.
Trustee Ertler?
Yes.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Supervisor Tusher?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Um, next grant is for Hollywood Citizens Association, for the community house. They didn't ask for one in two thirteen. So, and we usually give five hundred, so I guess that's why they're asking for a thousand in two fourteen, to make up for. See, a lot of times, I guess, the treasures change, and, you know. Oh, yeah, we do get a grant, okay, yeah.
This is for upkeep, I guess, and.
Yeah, I mean, Kathy, do you know if they're going for, I thought I had heard years ago that they're going for historic?
They're calling it historical in here.
Oh, you don't know, okay, I just thought maybe it's through the village you might have heard. Oh, yeah, it is in Brookfield, but I thought maybe something may have crossed your desk in the Village of Riverside.
Right, it's in the township, but it's in Brookfield.
Yeah. Do I hear a motion for a thousand dollars?
I'll make a motion, let's talk about it, you know, the Grand Hollywood Citizens Association.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Questions, concerns? Hearing non-roll call.
Trustee Giesman?
Yes.
Trustee Kavitsky?
Yes.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Ertler?
Yes.
Supervisor Tusher?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Oh, Rich, on that Riverside Police, that JMR thing, are they gonna like give us a demonstration like they usually do, or call us of the meeting, and?
I'll ask.
Maybe they'll have it, I'd appreciate it.
Are you gonna ask for an accounting from them as to how they are spending this thousand dollars?
Well, what, you mean detailed accounting, they said it's on maintenance and repairs.
Yeah, I mean, you know, see, you know, they have a lot of volunteers, could just be a lot for materials, too. Okay, that's just it.
That's probably just a portion of what they're gonna be receiving. And that's, I don't know how you would divide it up, they may spend three thousand dollars on it, and I don't know how you're gonna pull the thousand out of that bill.
Okay. Um, next grant request. It is, oh, we got the Houser Citizens, Riverside Little League sponsorship for four fifty.
So moved.
I make a motion, we grant the Riverside Little, North Riverside Little League four hundred and fifty bucks.
Didn't that just say so moved?
Oh, did you?
Yeah, it did.
I couldn't understand what, I heard it say something, but I didn't even know what it said.
Are you seconding?
I'll second it, let Wayne have it, I'll second.
Any questions or concerns? Hearing non-roll call.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Kavitsky?
Yes.
Trustee Giesman?
Yes.
Trustee Ertler?
Yeah.
Supervisor Tusher?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Um, grant request from Ms. Carol Stephens for macaroni soup at it's Penny over in North Riverside, for five hundred and fifty dollars. They put on a Friday night special entertainment, they, it's called macaroni soup. I talked to Penny, she said they wanna, you know, we grant them, we will be named, you know, as co-sponsors, and that are in cooperation with. But it's a township function, basically, too. Do I hear a motion to grant them five hundred and fifty dollars?
I'm so moved, I'll make a motion, we grant the North Riverside Recreation Department five hundred and fifty dollars. As long as they don't sing that, what is that song, Stinky Cake?
I can't hear you.
What is, they're singing a song called Stinky Cake?
Yeah.
They can't sing that, I'll make the motion for five hundred.
I think you wanna make it payable to.
Right, everything can be payable to that.
Payable to whatever, wherever it goes, we can't make it payable to the North Riverside Recreation.
Correct, as we have done for many, many years. Okay.
Is there a second?
Second.
I second.
Okay, Wayne, second.
Any questions, concerns? Hearing non-roll call.
Trustee Kavitsky?
Yes.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Ertler?
Yes.
Trustee Giesman?
Yes.
Supervisor Tusher?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Um, the next one. Riverside Arts Weekend Grant, that's raw, we have donated to them for years now, and it's held down downtown Riverside here, as a matter of fact, it is a big function. They're asking for a grant of fourteen hundred dollars.
That's double what they did from last year.
No, it looks like we did it twice, so we did, we gave them seven hundred and seven hundred last year, am I reading that correctly?
It looks like it.
Yeah.
So, it was a total of fourteen hundred?
Right.
I didn't remember that.
People who wrote the musical performances for seven hundred, and the children's art center, art area, for seven hundred dollars.
Is that, are you here for that, Joe?
We both are, yeah.
You're both, and Kathy?
Is this the same, is this fourteen hundred going to the same two?
It would, if it was granted, yeah, they're highly successful. They're to bring in some nationally known musicians and world winning musicians, that would really kick it up in the notch in terms of musical performances because of the art.
So, you're basically asking for fourteen hundred dollars, one, one check, like fourteen hundred dollars, or you're looking for two seven hundred dollars?
Accounting wise, it's up to you, but.
Yeah, so you should get.
We wanna use it for the children's program, for sure.
Yes.
And, and that one's only seven hundred, not all, but seven hundred, so the music?
Is also seven hundred, you can have a banner up there with your logo, and you can have specific advertising for it.
I'll make a motion that we grant the Riverside Arts Weekend fourteen hundred dollars, the grant, put in one hundred dollar checks, no. No, the fourteen hundred dollars that they're asking for.
I second.
Any questions, concerns? Hearing non-roll call.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Kavitsky?
Yes.
Trustee Ertler?
Yes.
Trustee Giesman?
Yes.
Supervisor Tusher?
Yes.
Okay, Riverside Junior Women's Charity Grant, they're for trivia night, it's two to four hundred dollars, and it's basically for food at their event, from what I can make out, and the check would be. This came up, and we wanted more information, and this is what, the email was back and forth, for food and our up and coming trivia night for four hundred dollars.
So, this is food for their trivia night?
Yeah. It's a fundraiser for the.
Do we know how much they're planning on raising?
No.
Last one, I think it raised about fifty, seven thousand, I can't remember exactly.
Is that in your September function for the pizza night?
No, that was, I was thinking of the last.
Oh, the last, okay.
We have these VIP tables, people can auction, and that's where the food is.
So, do you sell the food, or is it?
It's provided as part of the wedding day.
Do I hear a motion?
Make a motion that we donate four hundred dollars to the Riverside Junior Women's Charity to be used for their trivia night.
Second the motion.
Any questions, concerns? Hearing non-roll call.
Trustee Ertler?
Yes.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Giesman?
Yes.
Trustee Kibitsky?
Yes.
Supervisor Tusher?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, that's it for the grants, FYI, the government strategy, information, okay, no closed sessions. Any further visitors' remarks?
Okay, a motion, did the board approve and ratify payment of the bills identified on the general warrant February 2014 in the amount of $10,982.36, as presented to the board this 11th day of February 2014.
Second, I'm all for it.
Questions, concerns? Hearing none, roll call.
Trustee Gezman?
Yes.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Ertler?
Yes.
Trustee Kibitsky?
Yes.
Supervisor Tusher?
Yes.
Okay, next, a motion that the board ratified and approved payment of the amounts indicated on the following warrants, utility warrant February 2014 in the amount of $2,887.76, payroll warrant February 2014 in the amount of $16,212.81, health warrant February 2014 in the amount of $2,056.62, monthly filings February 2014 in the amount of $6,869.47, grants February 2014 in the amount of $1,500, petty cash November 20, 2013 through February 11, 2014 in the amount of $167.71, general assistance warrant February 2014 in the amount of $3,000, and township radio players warrant February 2014 in the amount of $120. All of the above is presented to the board this 11th day of February 2014.
Second the motion.
Any other, any questions, concerns? Hearing none, roll call.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Gezman?
Yes.
Trustee Ertler?
Yes.
Trustee Kibitsky?
Yes.
Supervisor Tusher?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Supervisor's comments or reviews, I have none. Do I hear a motion for adjournment?
Can I, one, one comma, one. On the financial statements, in the second page of the General Town Fund, it appears that under hospitalization, life insurance, in that top column, and FICA Medicare taxes, that we will not have enough money in those line items to cover the next two months.
Where are you, Ann?
The second page of the financial statements for the General Town Fund.
The one that ended January 31st?
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, it's up in the top there.
Which one?
What are the categories again?
Hospitalization, life insurance, and taxes, FICA and Medicare.
Oh.
So you see, we had almost $3,000 in January in the hospitalization, and we have $1,927 left in that account as of, in that fund as of the end of January. And in taxes, we spent $2,092 in January, as of the end of January, and we have $2,782 roughly left there. So, in the first one mentioned, that won't even cover February, and certainly, the taxes, the amount there's not going to cover February and March.
So we'll have to do a transfer.
Which is the end of the fiscal, so we should do, probably at the next meeting, a transfer, line item transfer, to cover those amounts.
Okay.
Wayne, you want to put that together?
Yes, I will.
Do you see that where I was referring to earlier?
Well, I, I see the hospitalization, but I, what was the second one?
That right, one note.
Any other questions or concerns?
I think we need to prepare ourselves that there's probably going to be a lot of flooding this spring. We have over five feet of snow, and when it starts to melt, and the ground is frozen, it doesn't really have any place to go. So I think we need to, you know, prepare ourselves that there might be some flooding in the Riverside Township during April, and then if we get a major rainstorm.
You know, we can send out notices to the people in Riverside Law, you know, this is a holding center, a safety center, and then if, like last year, FEMA wants us to fill out things, they'll let us know.
Right, yeah, it's just.
But they'll let us know if they want us to fill out.
Yeah. But I think, you know, with all the snow that we've had, that there's probably going to be some flooding this spring.
I believe there will be. Got to pray for a slow melt, but I still think you're going to get flooding.
And then if we have a rainstorm?
Exactly.
Should we put together some type of, a scenario for assisting the citizens in the case of that?
Well, as a, you know, like right now, it's, we use this as a, a heating refuge for people, or, when one of the floods in the, earlier, five, six years ago, you know, we had people staying over here all day, and, you know, I bought them food, you know, so if that happens, you know, maybe, you know, we can all help out again. I know Ann and I and Steve helped out, you know, I mean, I helped out sandbagging.
When, when does the next newsletter go out?
Pardon me?
When does the next newsletter go out?
Yeah, it's got to be, it'll come out quarterly, so.
Yeah.
It came out in November, December, January, February, it's got to be March, April.
That might be a good time to put something in there, in the newsletter.
Anything else?
I make a motion, we adjourn.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I didn't hear any ayes.